Hello, welcome to Reality TV. I'm Raymond Bakari. Today, I'm joined by Miguel Cazada, who is running for Providence City Council in Ward Nine. The incumbent for this ward, City Councilwoman Crumlin Castillo, is term limited, opening up the seat for 2022, and the ward itself contains the neighborhoods of Elmwood and South Elmwood. Miguel, how are you today?
Doing well, thanks. How are you?
I'm doing great, and it's good to have you on. My first question, it's a general one. Why do you want to be Ward Nine's next city councillor?
Sure. So first, if I could take a couple of seconds here, um, thank you. Thank you for for having me today. I've been very impressed with what you're doing via this video medium. And my sister's a Rick grad, so um, so there's some love there as well. But but I think you're doing wonderful work, and I got a feeling in not too many years, you're going to be on this side of the camera with someone interviewing you for a position that you're running for, so. So I think you'll be answering the same question that you want me to ask, uh, answer, which is why am I running? So I I must say, admit that I nev- I wasn't always someone else aspiring for politics. I like to kind of be behind the scenes and and that's the work that I've done in the community. You know, I'm on several boards, especially on affordable housing, so I'm on a swap board and president of that board. Swap means stop wasting abandoned properties. And, excuse me, uh, PRF, too. I'm on the board of that, Product Development Fund, who also does some work in affordable housing as well. And I'm also on the City Plan Commission with the city and seeing a lot of the inner workings of of city government there. And one of the reasons that I'm running is that, uh, I think especially some of the meetings where we have testimony from the city, actually from uh, from the public, where some of the concerns are not within the purview of the work that I'm doing. But I really want to be able to do more, so the city council gives a broader platform to work for the constituents for my, you know, my neighbors. And 2021 was a big year for me, as many year, but for me personally, um, I had a baby in 2021. So my daughter just turned one year old on Friday this past week. So that just brought a whole new light in terms of what I want for the community and, you know, and I want my daughter to grow up in the south side, uh, go to public school on the south side, and enjoy everything the south side has to offer. But there are some things that we need to improve on, and that's a big thing for me. And then last year, I should say, we had a bit of a issue in 2020. We had a fire in my home. We were displaced and had to stay in an Airbnb. And despite all that, I mean, we got out health-wise, no one had any issues. My wife was pregnant at the time, um, and, you know, we were, we got out without without any issue. But the outpouring of love and support that we got from people in around our neighbors, um, our neighborhood, um, was fantastic. But one thing that really touched me, and I was so happy when I was able to knock on a gentleman's door. He came to my house. There was a mitigation team in my house, the construction, myself. He didn't know who Miguel was. He just knocked. Said, um, this is Miguel here. And I'm like, uh, yes. I thought it was a city inspector. I was like, oh, we have our permit. We're straight. And he was like, oh, well, my wife and I heard about the fire and what happened to you and your family. And we just want to let you know that you're in our thoughts and prayers. He gave us a card and actually gave us a, and it gives a hundred dollar check. I never met this gentleman or his wife ever, um, but he, as a neighbor, felt compelled that if there's a fallen, you know, uh, neighbor uh, in our area that needs help, that it's his duty to come to the rescue and help in whichever way they can. And I say that, um, to just share, one, the greatness of our neighborhood. We have great, great people, but that really touched us to the core. So when this seat came up, uh, with the redistricting, the empty seat, I felt more compelled that we want to do more, um, in our community. So this is a joint effort between my wife, my daughter, myself. My daughter can't say anything yet, but um, but I had to get, uh, the the okay from my wife because, you know, we're doing this together. We have to support each other so that I can have the the time and energy to be able to make this work. And here I am with you now. So long answer to your questions, I apologize, but I've tried to keep this script.
Not a problem. It's a really interesting story that, and I'm really, I really appreciate you shared it. Looking at one of the main policies that you favor, it's equity on all levels. The term equity has been used a lot in recent years in our political dialogue. Can you explain for those watching in a nutshell what this would entail?
Yeah, so, um, you know, sometimes we use the word, we use equality more often, and now, we're starting to see nuances between equality and equity, and they're very different terms, right? So equity is giving people what they need to achieve. So I don't know if you've ever seen, there's a um, a cartoon, where they have three boys watching a baseball game. One tall kid that's over, that's looking over the fence. Then they have the other two who can't quite reach the fence. So what they says, well, let's be fair, equality. So they give them all a, say, a footstool. Well, the tall kid now can see even more. The middle kid can now see, but the third kid still can't see because he never got the piece that he needed. Like, he might need to say two feet. So equity says, let's look at everybody where they are, their starting line is, and let's give them what they need so that they all can reach the start line in a fair, um, you know, in a fair level. You know, so it's really about giving everyone that same chance and opportunity to succeed. And for us, that means on every level, education, um, you know, public health. I'm going to steal a word that I heard from some of your interviews, and I felt was wonderful, which is reimagining public safety. You know, these are all areas where we can look at making our neighborhood a better place to live and giving people what they need, um, from locally, local level, city, state, federal.
Looking at one component it could encompass, and it wasn't mentioned by the, it's a big topic focusing on 2022 elections in Providence, which is quality of life. It can encompass many of things, many things, like clean streets, roads not being cracked in all the neighborhoods, um, clean air, the whole nine yards. We have different ways city councillors are trying to go about improving quality of life, especially in Ward Nine. I've talked to a few of the candidates, and they each have their own way that they're going about it. How would you go about improving Ward Nine residents' quality of life?
Yeah, so, um, you know, so obviously, uh, clean and healthy streets is important to everyone in their family. So it's making sure that our ward gets a fair representation from the city, um, to make sure that, you know, where the cities, uh, streets are plowed and clean on a regular basis. And some of the complaints that are coming from our constituents are getting the attention that is deserved. You know, so my mother always said, you have two ears and one mouth. And, you know, you should listen more, speak a little less, but from my perspective, the two ears belong to the community. So my neighbors, this is yours to input the information, the needs that you have, and then for me to take my mouth to City Hall, um, and working with the departments in the city to make sure that we get our our fair representation and share of these services to make sure that we have that quality of life, um, there. And then also looking long-term, I mean, I think climate change and, um, you know, you know, climate justice is a very important issue. Even though the the water is over more, is over on Ward 10, that affects us all, right? And all those activities that have taken place there have, you know, done a lot of damage to our air quality. You know, so looking at ways to change ordinances to make sure that we protect the water and access to the water and and making sure that the quality of the air is improved so that we're not suffering from health consequences. If you look at right, real close to to the water there, I mean, they have the highest asthma rates in the state and one of the highest in the country, and it's due to the commercial activity that has taken place there.
Especially with the Port of Providence and the city, that's, that's, that's another big part of it. And I'm glad you mentioned the environment. I was, I was, I was going to allude to another quality of life topic, but uh, the climate is a big part of it. There's calls recently, well, I shouldn't say recently, but over the past couple of years for a city-level Green New Deal. This has become popular amongst a lot of candidates running for city council. Boston, a neighboring city, implemented one in 2021. Where do you stand on the idea of a city-level Green New Deal?
Yeah, um, I mean, I, I think that should be at the top of the list for for the council, for sure. Looking at, you know, all the attributes of a plan to make sure that we are moving in the right direction. There's a lot of things that have set us back, so we need to reverse those and then look at putting things into place so that in the future, we're, we're moving in the best direction. I mean, um, if you even look at the Port of Providence, you know, looking at alternative energy is one of the things that are taking place there, uh, to make sure that we start to reverse, you know, that that issue. And, um, you know, I, I think Boston is on on the right track, and there's no reason for us to not be moving in that same direction. And I am, I feel confident with the changeover in the council. It's going to be a lot of new people, and it looks like that is on the top of people's radar, so I'm pretty excited about the opportunity for that.
Certainly will be on the top of a lot, on a lot of their radars. I'm getting, that's probably that alongside with the pension system or like the top two topics I've heard from each candidate in each ward. Going toward, back to Ward Nine for a second, Roger Williams Park is in the ward, and this fits in that quality of life discussion and even the environment because people want clean parks. And Roger Williams Park is a beautiful park. I got my senior photos taken there when I was graduating from high school. And I asked every candidate about this question specifically since there's room for potential to utilize the park to its fullest potential. Are there any plans or investments in mind that you would advocate for if, in regards to Roger Williams Park?
Yeah, so, um, and I'm going to sound a little biased here, right? But I do think Roger Williams is the gem of the city. I mean, it's it's a beautiful urban park. Um, there's already some improvements being made. You may have heard about the Welcome Center. It's going to be on Broad Street. You know, and that's a way to bring more of not, I mean, the community to get, give them kind of a portal into into the parks so that there's a more welcoming, um, presence there, but also for the rest of the city and state to be able to also enjoy this, this beautiful park. You know, and in recent years, they've, they've done a lot also with some of the trails in there. So during the pandemic, I mean, I'm embarrassed to say that even I didn't know how much more there was there. So I ran cross-country in in high school, and we used to use Roger Williams, uh, Park for our home turf there. But there's so many beautiful trails around the lake. So during the pandemic, you know, we, we did a lot of, uh, you know, trail walking, running, and just enjoying, you know, the, the access to the green space, you know, the water there. And I, I think, you know, there's still, when you go there, there's still plenty of space left, no matter how many people there. I mean, so more people can enjoy, uh, enjoy that. And I think we'll also have to invest in our neighborhood parks that are close to people where they can kind of, you know, the kids can walk right from their home and enjoy those. So I'm, I'm happy to see that we have a lot of those playgrounds, but we can definitely improve on those as well. You know, and then last, as you say, looking at surface lots, you know, so, um, that's also increasing the heat and, you know, the kind of heat maps into into the neighborhoods. So we're looking at ways to make that a little more green, whether it's the periphery or turning some of those parking lots into, um, to building things and and other things of that sort.
And it is possible, some of these ideas might need either state or possibly federal help. You know, basically getting resources from, from the state and federal governments. And I know that's another policy you favor, especially in that umbrella topic of equity on all levels. What sort of resources do you believe would be needed, uh, for either the ward or the city as a whole?
Yeah, so we look at a lot of resources in all of Providence. Even though they, they are, you know, in Providence, they're, they're being used by everyone throughout the state and sometimes even the region. I mean, look at Roger Williams, we have the Roger Williams Zoo. So there's people that come from all, so there's no reason, that, that is one of the reasons that the state does give funding for some of these resources, but they can be more, they can be increased in that as well to make sure that we are, that are properly maintained, um, and and improved upon. And, you know, and then we had the Carol, by the way, my, so I said, I thought I just turned one on, on Friday, but we delayed her birthday party. We're waiting for the in-laws to come in, and we're going to be celebrating that at the carousel. So it is so many things in there. The Temple to Music is going to have the Dominican Festival, um, a week from Sunday. They're going to march down Broad Street in my ward and going already over to Temple to Music. So there's a lot of amenities there, and, you know, as beautiful as it is right now, there's more things we can do to give more access to the community and making sure that that maintains, to be, it maintains as the GM of the ward and the city and state.
Moving on to education, which is another topic you brought up toward the, toward the start. There's a lot of, um, different ideas of how the city should move when it comes to education. And I would, I would assume you're hearing different things while you're canvassing from residents. What are you hearing from residents when, when they bring up education?
So, um, there's several things that come up. I mean, one is that the state takeover and what does that really mean? And when will it get back under local control? It's never, never a good thing when a state takes over. It's because there's a massive problem. You know, in our case, it was a Johns Hopkins report that came out that highlighted many of the issues that some people may have been privy to, but now we all know how, um, you know, and how much of a, uh, bad situation the city is. And I'm not going to point fingers, but I could tell you who does not deserve a finger, and that's the children. It's not the child's fault that the school is the way it is. Everyone else, all of us, you know, can partake in in that responsibility. So while it's a negative situation to be where we are now, the thing is that now we ha- I can confront the issue. Now we can no longer deny it. And what I'm hoping is that everyone can now come together to say, what is the best solution for the city of Providence School Department? You know, and while it's still under the, the state control, I think the city has to be proactive and city council in particular, um, to see what we can do on a local level. Even though we lost some of the power, there's certain things that we, we can definitely, um, you know, work on. You probably may be aware that they're looking at the school board and seeing how that makeup may change, uh, may change. So until recent, until now, it's an appointed board. As you can imagine, that means that, you know, power is coming from one entity versus having an elected board like most cities in Rhode Island. So they're looking at a hybrid model, which is a little bit of both. So you have half, half elected, and I think changing, um, will presentation to the Black Lives of Providence and, um, hopefully, uh, bring some, some, um, some robust, robust, which is to block and bring accountability so that we all can, who is the innocent party, which are and, you know, everyone knows education is the, is what is or comes close to the 20 people. But education, now they have a path to succeed.
Speaking of the state takeover, uh, it's still going on. Some are calling for it to come back to city control immediately. Others want it to have, uh, some more time to, to make the meaningful changes since COVID sort of threw things off for two years. It looks like 2025, that minimum, it might be going until. I heard the commissioner wanted to, uh, move it to 2027 because of the loss of, uh, two years of, um, trying to make changes. Where do you currently stand when it comes to the state of the state takeover of the public schools?
Yeah, so that's, that's one of the top, um, issues that comes up when I'm knocking on doors is education and the concern of the state takeover. So it's never a good situation when the state takes over. It means that the school is just in that bad shape. And, um, and this wasn't a, you know, problem that happened overnight. But I think that the Johns Hopkins report, which is kind of what revealed a lot of the disparity, the, the issues of, of, you know, of the education and the lack of quality of that for the only party that's innocent here, which is the children, you know. So we could all point fingers. It's everyone's fault. You know, I'm not going to say and and point fingers at any specific entity, but I will say that the child has no fault in this. And unfortunately, they're the ones paying the highest consequence. So it's, it makes sense that they would want to extend it for the period that the pandemic kind of stalled any of the efforts. You know, we're in the middle of a takeover, then you get the pandemic. So obviously, um, that, that was an issue, but, um, but I, I think that there's things that the city can do. I mean, so you're probably aware that they're looking at changing the makeup of the school board. It's always been, or I don't know if it's always, but it's been, at least in recent times, a 100% appointed board. They're looking at a hybrid model where half will be appointed, half will be elected. That makes it a little more democratic, right? Because now you get people from, um, you know, the city. The only concerns I have is, you know, just people are going to have to have the means and wherewithal to possibly run an election. We don't want the elections to be taken over by only, you know, people who have access to money, for example. So we'll have to kind of look at those nuances. But I think that's one step in the right direction. In the city council, I think, can be more involved to, to hold the parties accountable to make sure that we are serving our, our children. I'm a product of the public schools. I went to, I graduated from classical high school not, not too far from where I live now. And, you know, I, I think that we need to bring quality and equity, you know, to our children. And, you know, like I said, I have one-year-old daughter. I want her to go to grow up here, live here, and to go to public schools here.
So it sounds like give the state the, the time it needs to improve what's going on with the public schools, but also let the city still have a say in what's going on?
Yeah, we shouldn't wait for the baton to get passed.
Also, back, back to control sooner.
So I'm not, not, I'm sorry, not necessarily, that's not, we're already in the process of state takeover. So we have to give whatever that process time. But I think we have to bring us to the table now as we're going through this and not wait till the baton gets passed in 2025 or whenever they're going to pass it. You know, it has to be, we have to be on, at the table now. And that is, you know, the city council will be involved, but definitely the school board and the community, you know, the parents, you know. That's one of the biggest complaints I've heard, too, that the parents have felt that they haven't been, um, well-connected to the process and evolved. And we need to make sure that that is happening. And, and of course, the children themselves, because they're the ones going to school and make sure their voices are heard.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification. In terms of the elected school board, uh, are you on board with that idea?
Yeah, I, I think, um, you know, the hybrid is an easy, easier way for a topic. You kind of have, you know, keep the half appointed and and the half, um, elected. And going forward, um, I think it'll give us a comparison. And, you know, who knows, maybe decide to go fully, you know, elected at that time. You know, so, uh, but we have to look, make sure that we get a full representation, too, so that, you know, it's not just one area that's getting, you know, all the elected positions. So we may have to look at it geographically and say that we need it from certain areas to be sure that it has full representation.
It's going to be interesting to see how that plays out. And for those watching, if the council does approve it, it's going to be on the November ballot for voter approval. Moving on to another topic within education, I'm assuming you've probably either already heard of this from residents or it'll likely be brought up to you, uh, that's the idea of an expansion of charter schools in the city. It's probably been mentioned by a resident or two, I would assume. What kind of role do you believe charter schools should have in the city?
Yeah, so, um, and for the public, I mean, I'm sure most people know, but in case they don't, the issue with the, with the charter schools for a lot of folks is that the money goes with the child. So you're taking money away from, you know, the public school. But if you think of what the intention of that money is, is to educate a child. So as long as that child's being educated, it shouldn't matter where, if it happens at a charter school or traditionally public school. You know, and I understand because we're looking at the infrastructure of the schools and and all that, but that should be our number one priority. And with the situation that we're in with our, the quality of our schools, who am I to look at a parent and say that they shouldn't have that choice? They're looking at what's best for the child and, you know, it is, it would be irresponsible and unfair for me to want to deny that of a parent. And so for that, from that perspective, um, I support, you know, for both models to exist so that parents have that, that choice. And the expansion of some of these, um, charter schools will be part of that equation.
Moving on to a topic I want to ask you, it focuses on the private colleges, and this is something I've been asking multiple candidates, uh, seeking the same seat about. So the current private colleges like Brown University, PC, J-Woo, and RISD, they don't pay, they don't pay taxes. Some instead pay a pilot, through a pilot program, for those watching, uh, payment in lieu of taxes. Some candidates seeking elected office are on board with the idea of taxation, uh, mainly the state level because it's something the state would have to focus on. But if you're elected, you would have the opportunity to use your platform to advocate if you do favor it. Especially in Brown's case, they have a $7 billion endowment and are, um, buying up lots of land that's off the tax roll. What are your thoughts on the idea of taxation for the private colleges?
Yeah, so, so I'm looking, I'm just writing down, uh, as you speak. So, um, they should all, the, the contributions that come from the private, um, universities needs to be increased. And I think that that's, that'll be a main goal to get them to the table to discuss their current agreements and look at what they can increase it to for the future. So 40%, 40% of all properties in Providence are off the tax roll. And that's because they're owned by these private institutions. So that means the rest of the citizens of Providence, who comprise of 60%, are paying 100% of the bill. So that's unfair to the rest of us. You know, there's people who are complaining about the rise in their taxes. Well, there's a reason because you're paying more than your fair share. So I think they definitely need to increase. And you've mentioned the universities, but you also have to look at other institutions like lifespan as well. Lifespan does not pay into a pilot program at all. So that, you know, these are all institutions that need to come back to the table. They, I know that some of the, um, things that they might come up with is that they contribute to the economy, and they do, right? I'm not denying that, and they contribute in other ways. But they, they, there needs to be a higher amount coming into taxes, one. But two, I'm also looking at what it is that they're doing. So like, if you think of, you know, I'm not trying to bash on anyone or Brown, right? But just because Brown is on the east side where our highest assessed properties are, every property they take is pretty heavy on, on our, uh, you know, revenue side. So, um, I think that if they spread to other areas where some communities might need certain type of services that might be within their mission, those are some other ways that they can contribute to it, you know. And I happen to live in a house of the person who founded Classical High School as a standalone building. And the reason I bring this up is that, um, while he was alive, he, um, he was recognized by Brown for preparing and sending the most students to Brown from any other institution in the country. Well, I don't know what the numbers are now, but I can pretty much, I could pretty assure you that it's nowhere near what they were sending back then. So what is Brown as a, as a higher education, you know, PC, J-Woo? What are they doing to make sure that our students here in Providence and in Rhode Island are preparing themselves to, you know, meet the qualifications to get into the schools? You know, if they, if the student decides to go elsewhere, by all means, that's fine. That's their choice. But they should be qualified to get there. So they need to invest more in our educational system, working with, you know, the school department. And those are other ways that they can contribute to our society, you know. And, um, a good example of, of a good steward, I guess, for lack of a term, is Yale and New Haven and what they're doing there to make sure that they're, um, you know, contributing their fair share to the city of New Haven. And I think we could look at that as a model and see how we can take some of those things and apply them here in Providence.
I think Mayor candidate Gonzalo Cuervo did bring up that, that exact example between Yale and New Haven. Looking more at this, the reason why I brought up the taxation of the private colleges, especially it's, it's relevant for all these topics you're talking about is because the money has to come from somewhere, whether it's repairing that building, make sure that plow truck us, uh, plows the snow on time. The money has to come from somewhere. And this is another topic I bring alongside that private colleges one because it's one of the, um, few mentioned possible, I guess, solutions, you could say, when it comes to the city's unfunded pension system. Because that in itself is like a ticking time bomb for the city's finances right now, despite having that ARPA money. And if we spend it strategically, you still have that pension system as the looming cloud ready to rain. So, um, in terms of the pensions, I'm just doing a little bit of pivoting. Aside from if, in the world where taxation of the private colleges doesn't happen, since the state sort of has to decide that, are there any other ideas you would favor that could be an aid to that situation?
To the, to the situation with the pension itself?
Yes, the pension system.
Yeah, so, um, so you probably know that we had the, the bond that was approved, um, was that last month? Yeah, in June, right? And I, you know, like most people, I didn't like to be in a situation where we had to look at that as an option, but I don't think it was much of a choice because we're in, you know, it's funded in the twenties, like 24, 25%. So we're highly underfunded, um, and it's an obligation that we have to meet. So this, that was just one tool to, you know, help kind of bridge the, you know, the gap there. But you also may be aware that because of the guardrails, which was responsible to put in there, I don't even think we can even access the money right now because the interest rates are going up due to what's happening in the economy and also the market has, you know, gone down a lot as well. So that's just a good blessing that we didn't invest in it sooner. But you can't time those things. I mean, it's, it's, you know, one of those things that, you know, you, you can't time the market. And if you try to time a market, that's usually when you fail pretty hard. But, um, you know, so I, I favored the bond because I, you know, I felt like that was our best option at, at that point. And I wouldn't want to sell resources. I know that's come up in the past, too, to sell some of our, you know, natural resources. And that's something that wouldn't be, um, you know, uh, responsible for us to do. So this was just one way to do it. And, but I, but I think the private institutions, I think that's what you bring to the table. It's like, you're 40% of our tax base and not paying anything, and you need to contribute because you are a member of this community, you know, the city, and we need you to pay a share so that we can get out of some of these, um, you know, from under some of this pressure.
It will be an interesting battle to see at the state level because the, the state has to pass that bill. And so just sort of to, to kind of summarize it, a combination of if, you know, the guardrails are there for that bond and then the private institutions kicking in money?
Yes, you know, and, and then, and then you have to look at other ways that we can increase our tax base, which is obviously see some of the economic development, you know, bringing in, um, more corporate partners that want to, you know, come to the wonderful city of Providence. Downtown is obviously an important area. The 195 projects are going to come online and help contribute in some, bridge some of that gap as well. So as we start, you know, the prosperity, the prosperity, excuse me, of the city, uh, increases, we can start bringing in a little more on the revenue side to help, um, you know, level the playing field.
These next three are shorter form questions I ask every- These next, uh, three are shorter form questions. I ask every council candidate, so you're probably aware of what they are since you've seen some previous episodes. Do you have a certain committee you'd like to be on if elected?
All right. So I'm happy you asked that question. That's probably the easiest of the questions you're about to ask. So, uh, finance, um, is one that I'm highly, highly interested in, um, you know, especially working, um, on, or rather, um, serving on the, um, the city plan commission. A lot of the things that we would discuss or send over to the council would go to the finance committee. So I'm very familiar with it and I recognize, you know, the, um, importance of that committee. Um, and then public works too. When you will talk about public, um, the quality of life, um, public works contributes to that at so many levels. So I think that's also a very important, uh, committee, but I'll obviously be happy to serve, um, you know, any committee because they're all important, but those are the two that, uh, most important to me, especially finance.
One of the two more difficult out of the three is, um, which of the mayoral candidates do you plan to support in September?
And you're not gonna like my answer, but, uh, but right now I'm, I'm just concentrating on my campaign. And, you know, um, that's where my focus is. Um, all I could say is that, you know, we have some good candidates and that's a good problem to have. You know, we are, you're choosing between these three folks. Um, and I am very confident that whoever, you know, wins that, the primary and becomes our mayor, that I'll be able to work with them closely, um, and making sure that we are keeping on a path to keep Providence moving in the right direction.
And, uh, another one I have that is a little more difficult, but it is gonna be one of your first votes if you're elected, um, and the primary and then in the November ballot. Who would you support for council president if elected?
Yeah, um, and, and the same there. Um, um, again, concentrating on my campaign, but also, um, you know, I'm obviously not in the city council yet. Hopefully I will be, uh, soon. And once, you know, once I'm there, that's, that's gonna be one of the first things to meet with everyone that's interested in, in the post and, um, and, you know, and seeing who's the best choice for, you know, for our leadership, um, and for the city's, uh, future.
And my final question, it's a non-political topic, takes a step away from all these political issues. I like to ask everyone to, to keep the tradition. In your opinion, what do you think Rhode Island is best known for?
Yeah, so, you know, and, and I've seen some of your podcasts and, uh, your videos and, you know, you used to get, I mean, culinary arts always comes up. Even when you're out of Rhode Island, I mean, the amount of restaurants that we have, uh, diverse, you know, um, cuisines is phenomenal. But what is most special to me is the people. You know, I told you the example, personal, what happened to me last year with, with the fire and people, where people came out in support. But all those things that are pastoral is through the diversity of folks. You know, most people, you know, you say, oh, it's diverse. It's like two or three different groups. In Providence, it's like, it seems like the whole world is here. I mean, it's phenomenal. It's phenomenal. You people from all, you know, ends of the earth. Um, and we all come here together, pull together to help each other out. And, and it's just, it's really what makes Providence special. And it's why, you know, um, you know, like, like I said, I grew up mostly here, but when I went, I went away for college, when it came time for me to have a family, there was no other choice but to come back home to Providence because that's where I want my, you know, my daughter to, um, you know, grow up and have all those influences from all over the world. I mean, people is, that, that's, that's what really makes Providence and Rhode Island such a beautiful place.
It's absolutely true. And for those watching who don't know, we have a, a, a mixture of, uh, groups of people that live in the state. There's Liberian, uh, Liberian community, Armenian, Portuguese, Italian, Irish, everything, Dominican, Puerto Rican, Guatemalan, everything. And it ju- it does en- enrich the state and it just makes things so much better because you're always getting those perspectives that you might not be, might, might not know about. And, uh, especially with the culinary scene, how you mentioned it too, we have a, a, a lot of great restaurants in Providence. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you have any go-tos?
Ah, there's so many great places. Um, so I'm Dominican. And, you know, and my, so I'm Dominican, my wife is Brazilian. So even within my own household, we have a mix. So what we're doing is, um, and I speak Portuguese because of my wife, but we're trying to make a maternal language where my wife only speaks Portuguese at home. I only speak Spanish. We mess it up all the time. I'll respond in Portuguese all she, and I'll, oh, no, stop, because we want our daughter to learn those and then let English be the community language. So we're trying to, we're practicing within our three cultures, um, you know, what Providence has to offer. And, and I say that too, because I don't get Dominican food at home all the time because, you know, my wife's Brazilian, so we mix it up. So if I want to get Dominican food, I mean, I'll go on Broad Street to like Grand Parada. It's, it's a great place. The Obitos, which is right down from, from there as well. Um, you know, they're nice, quick. Um, and then right around my, actually, no, there's so many, right around the corner from my house, across from the library, um, there's, um, La Mia Market. So that's actually not even a full restaurant, it's a bodega, but they have, you know, a hot food area. So it's wonderful. You can do, you go pick up some milk and bread at home and then pick up a meal and you can be out of there in ten minutes. Phenomenal, you know? Convenient, delicious food.
One stop shop. It's all right there. That's very convenient too. Thanks for the recommendations. I might have to check out some of those places, uh, when I, when I'm in the area. Uh, Miguel, I want to thank you so much for coming on. It's been an absolute pleasure mine to have you on the show.
Thank you. No, thank you again. Um, I think you're doing a wonderful job. I'm so happy to see what you're doing. And, um, like I said, I've got a feeling not to, distant in the future, Ray's gonna be on the other side, being interviewed for whatever you decide to run. So any, any ideas of what you may want to run for?
I'm not gonna say anything yet, but, uh, never say never. Uh, thank, thank you for those kind words. I really appreciate that. And thank you for watching this episode of Reality TV. If you want to see future episodes, as soon as they're posted on this channel, please click the subscribe button down below and the post notification bell icon to the right of it. I'm Raymond Bakari. I'll see you on the next episode.